2022 Board Work Session of the Lynchburg City School Board and having called our meeting to order, an item B is our agenda, and the agenda before you tonight has been featured on board docs, and we do want to make sure that everyone is in agreement. So is there a motion to approve our agenda for tonight's work session?
I move that we approve the agenda for tonight's work session.
Thank you, Dr. Carter, for the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Dr. Brennan. Any further questions or discussion? Any board member hearing none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, Mr. Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Ms. Morrison.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
We're going to stand now for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We certainly send all our thoughts out to people across our nation that are grieving unnecessarily, and certainly we are trying to do all we can here to make our place of a board the best that it can be. With that in mind, there will be no policy updates tonight in Section C, board members, and so govern yourselves accordingly as we prepare for the future. Two agenda items tonight. One is necessary for us to do provisionally, in a sense, and it has to do with HR Annual License Professional Board Report, and I'm going to ask Dr. Edwards to bring that before us at this time.
Absolutely, and I see that Mrs. Scott has logged on in Zoom, so she'll give you a quick overview, especially for new board members who may not be familiar with this process.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Ms. Scott.
Um, so, right, so this is the standard HR report that you all approve every year for teachers and administrative staff for next school year. And you have, you know, we need your approval before we can do the contracts for next year. And I can share my screen. Oh, I can't share. Do you want me to pull it up?
Yes.
But we don't need to.
Okay. No, you don't need to.
Nope. Yes. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Yeah, they don't need to see it. They all have copies, just if they have questions regarding the process, since we have some new board members.
All right, you have the report before you, and I believe School Board Member Morrison.
Yes, Dr. Coleman, I will be abstaining from voting on this item because I have a family member who's on this list.
Let the record be so noted, and thank you, Ms. Morrison, for that. Dr. Senha.
I just wanted to ask, there, I see some names that are duplicated on here. Are those intentional, or is it somebody holding multiple positions at different schools or something?
Yes.
Like the movement.
Yes, yes.
Has three.
We do have some itinerant employees who, particularly in resources, art, music, that teach at two schools or.
Okay, yeah, and then this third grade teacher, Ms. Tucker, appears in there twice.
Everybody clear on that?
Yes.
This is how we make it happen for many of our employees. All right, Dr. Gupta.
So, Ms. Scott, assuming the budget is still in limbo, and so the approval of this report doesn't mean you'll be issuing contracts to all these teachers.
Right, we have to wait until you all approve the budget.
To issue final, we can do contingent, and I'll talk a little bit about that before, when we do the budget, or when we get to the next section.
And if, Mr. Tros.
Yeah, I am a new school board member.
All right.
But let me ask, so are these annual contract renewals here, or are they multi-year contracts?
It's annual, then we have some continuing as well. So, and it's broken up by teacher and administrative, just depends on what contract they on. So, an annual contract or continuing contract.
And so I saw like, and then I guess you have, based upon a tier, is it one year, two year, three year tiers? And is that because after three years, what do they give, tenure, or how, what's that, what's the process there?
So, to get your, to become a teacher, it takes about three years to have a continuing contract.
Okay, and then after the third year, then is it an evergreen, or is it a, what happens after that?
Then you'll be able to get an annual contract.
Okay, so I guess, I don't understand, the first year and second year, what does that mean?
The three years of a certificated personnel, so for, for teachers and administrators that require certificates, it's considered a probationary period. It really makes a difference when you start talking about non-renewals and their rights as growing and developing staff members. After the third consecutive year, they're offered what's considered a continuing contract. We still approve them annually, but they, they're on a continuing contract, which affects a whole bunch of other things. So, probationary, they get evaluated each year, three times a year. Continuing contract, they can move to a professional growth plan for two, for two years, and then back to full evaluation and so on and so forth.
And then are these, after they go, so I understood that the first three years, they're on an annual review, correct?
A full annual, everybody's reviewed annually, but they're, they're observed a lot more frequently as a probationary staff member than someone who has been here for five years who's on a continuing contract.
Okay, and then if it's a continuing contract, you say they have certain rights, and what I'm getting at is, the people that are looking for unionization, give me a comparison or contrast between a unionization or unionized teacher, which we don't have, and this continuing contract continuing rights.
Absolutely. So, it depends on the terms in which you form with the bargaining unit. So, and it could be every, anything from, if, if the board remembers our training about bargaining units, it could be anything from just, hey, we meet and we discuss school issues, that's part of our contract with the bargaining unit, which would have no legal effect on anything going forward in terms of a continuing contract. Or it could be as strict as, and, and you know, I'm from a different state where we had a three-year contract, and it was a little bit different, and the rules were a little bit tighter in terms of regulation for, you know, sick leave, and everything was spelled out that it was mutually binding between the groups. But since we do not have any, we don't have any bargaining unit agreements yet, or at all right now, none of that really applies to, to this current approval of staff to return next year.
Okay. And obviously, because they're all on this list, I'm assuming they all had satisfactory reviews.
Yes. Okay. There are, there are folks who have, what, what you would have missing from this list is anyone who turned in a resignation, anyone who's retiring, obviously not returning, anyone who's probationary and is being non-renewed, which means they're just left off the list and have been told that, you know, we are not renewing your probationary contract. And if we did have a staff member who was on a continuing contract, there's a process for that. There's appeals that they have if we decide that we want to separate from them. It starts with, obviously, the supervisor, it moves up to me, we can even go so far as having a board hearing, depending upon whether you're in a probationary stage, or if you're in a continuing contract stage. That's what I mean by the rights in terms of their.
And then the review process, is there a, do exemplary, I don't know what the tier structure is in the review for the instructors, but is it multi-tiered in terms of, hey, you're meeting the needs, or meeting the requirements, or?
It looks like mine, with all those categories and those levels, and, but a little bit different, and they don't have strategic plan. They have classroom management, depending upon whether they're a certificated staff. The nurses, one looks a little bit different, depending upon the nurses. The principals, one looks more in line with, with mine. So, they do have the set, the same areas that we have student achievement as an area. They may have, instead of community engagement, it may be family engagement.
And then the follow-up to that is, is there any kind of pay for performance type of incentives for us if you do, no?
No, we do not have that, no.
None.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for that quick overview. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Tros. We appreciate that. Anyone else have a comment on this matter? If not, is there a motion to approve the HR Annual License Professional Board Report? Most have been made by Dr. Gupta, seconded by Dr. Carter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll with the abstention coming from Ms. Morrison.
Scoop up, my Mr. Tros.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Brennan.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Senha.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Scoop up, my Mr. Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero with one abstain.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, members of the board, you are aware of the fact that we need to do some advocacy to, before the General Assembly, to get them to, get a good budget to us that will support what we are trying to do here in Lynchburg, at least. And so, it's not a whole lot we can do, but we're going to hopefully contain this conversation to, I can't restrict anything, but, you know, thirty minutes or less, and get to a place where we can help give some direction to administration going forward. So I've asked Dr. Edwards to tee us up with what she wants us to know, and then we'll try to have a little discussion here for a moment. Dr. Edwards.
Yeah, so if I could just start with process, just to give the board an idea of where we are. Typically, this board meeting, this work session, we're finalizing things. We are not still waiting. And because we're waiting, that means my payroll department, finance, and HR departments are also waiting. And one of the things, excuse me, that we have to do is what we call, I'll call it a rollover of everyone, and make sure that we've put in the correct percentage for next year, and of course, any stipends for degrees and things like that. Our current system will allow us to do that and get ready for that, but it's very difficult to have multiple options of that set up. It's, it's very time consuming and tedious. So, in other words, when I say rollover, if we knew that we were leaning towards the year that we did a three percent increase, we had it ready, so that when the board approved, we could go click, okay, we could rollover, and then it would trigger a whole bunch of other HR and personnel, HR and finance functions. Right now, we're just sitting pretty, which is one of the reasons why we want to have this meeting to look at if then possibilities of where we are. And it's not just us, it's everybody in the whole entire Commonwealth. We're all sitting here, and I met with both my Region Five Supes and my local Supes to kind of see what everyone is, is doing with that process. We do like to issue and have in the past issued our staff contracts before they leave, which you all know is in about two weeks for most of our ten-month staff after graduation, or the last Friday in, in May for many of them. We don't typically see them. The contracts that we do issue have been signed in the past, and we're moving more to electronic way to expedite them, but we do know that once our staff leave, in some cases, it's difficult to get back the signed contract. So we are preparing for that, and each contract is personalized, so it's not a, just a generic one that does not have your name. It has your name, your information, your location, your salary. So, and that's all has to be vetted through HR and, and finance working together. So, I'm just going to smile nicely and look at them, and I know they are very nervous, as, as are many departments across the state, because they, we all want to get it done before, obviously, the end of school, definitely before June thirtieth, so that our budgets are complete. So that brings us to where we are all sitting right now in terms of what we need to do. We had three proposals for possible funding from the, the state. We have solidified the funding from the, well, I will say, we, we know the funding from the city. So, we know the city gave us the nine hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, a little bit over, which is the local match for the five percent increase. So that's where that number came from. It's the local match to five percent for the SOQ-funded positions, which we, we've talked about in terms of us doing, making sure that we do more than just the SOQ-funded folks. So, that being said, that is already less than what we had asked from the city. But that still leaves us with possibilities if we get the House funding, the governor's funding, or the state funding. And I did for you over the weekend, in the weekend update, a quick summary of where we stood, if we received House funding, governor's funding, and Senate funding, as it related to our priorities that we presented when we had the public hearing on March fifteenth. So if you recall, our priority list on March fifteenth, which was condensed, does include the five percent. I highlighted it so that we would know, even though the board voted for the eight percent, but what we actually presented that night has the values for the five percent. We broke it up into zeros, which are things that are going to go up anyhow, whether we like it or not, and we projected that funding. We've changed it to a one plus, so we could separate the increase for the staff, and then ones were priorities of other things that we, we brought to you tonight. So, summary, if we get the House budget at this point, the, we would not have enough to even fund the five percent increase, even with the local match from that. Now, if we don't take the money, the revenue is going to be even lower. So remember, if we don't do the five percent, it's not like they're going to let us keep that funding. So we have some work to do there. If we get the governor's budget, which is where we targeted our, our original proposal, we will have enough to do the priority items, and we still can do the five percent. And obviously, if we get the Senate budget, we could do the, up to the five percent, plus many of the priority items that we had listed as, as priority one. I think we're about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars short. So tonight, we are looking for direction. We do want to issue what we call contingent contracts that say, yes, we're going to approve you tonight, yes, we want to bring you back, yes, we would love to give you an increase. It is my recommendation that we do those contingent contracts as a five percent increase. That's the local match that City Council gave us, that's mid-ground, that we have. It'll allow us to issue those to staff within the last week of school and have something contingent. Now, it still gives the board options. If we do somehow get a windfall of money, and we're like, we're sitting pretty, and the board says we want to revisit this, we've done that in the past. You guys have increased salaries mid-year. We've done, where we've done salary increases. It's just a contingent contract at this point. So that's part one. I'm looking for some guidance about, can we go ahead and give contingent contracts with the five percent increase pending the outcome of the budget? The second thing that I'm looking for is, we have a bunch of priorities. We've got three pages worth of priorities. We already know that we did not receive all the funding we wanted from City Council, which means we have to make some choices. And we'd like to kind of get the, the will of the board, or the consensus of the board, as to re-ranking these priorities as what is on high priority lists for board members, and, and then we can work our way down as to what's, what's not as high of a priority. Not that we're saying it's not important, just that we're going to have to make some decisions. So, for example, I will, by number, number one twelve and one seventeen, tuition for the CTE Academy and tuition for the University of Lynchburg courses are things that are, funds that are dedicated to pay for students to take classes, whether it's at the CVC CTE Academy or the University of Lynchburg. It's a little over fifty-one thousand dollars. You may say, that's a priority for me. I want the money to go to expand course offerings for students. And you may say, one twelve, one seventeen, those are my top. And you may have a different feel about it, which is what I've asked each board member to do in preparation of this meeting. That will allow us to get ready in terms of the work that we need to do. We are going to have a very short turnaround time when, and hopefully soon, the Assembly comes back and at least gives us a final budget.
All right, thank you, Dr. Edwards. First of all, I want everybody to, to take a deep breath. The five percent piece is what the superintendent is sharing with us, and you see the challenges in attempting to do that based upon whether it be the House budget, the governor's budget, or the Senate budget. Now, the other piece with the eight percent, you can see the reality of what that would be, depending upon other additives. And at least from my limited math, that's a stretch. So, I think that I would like the board, and we would start, Mr. Tros, if he doesn't mind, are we comfortable going with the five percent, or is there any one, looking at the reality of eight percent. We just have to keep it real, and then we can move on and look at very briefly these priority pieces. And so, basically, looking at this, Mr. Tros, where are you with that, five percent or eight percent?
I'm at eight percent. I think, I mean, I, I understand the realities. I think we owe it to our staff to do that, just because of, if all the surrounding county, we're not getting, getting anywhere by the five percent, and I, I'm appreciative that we're able to get to the five percent. And I know, I, I've gone through this, I struggle with it. I just think we need to keep fighting for that eight percent, and see if there's somewhere we can find this money. We seem to have unfunded positions, or overfunded positions, or whatever, unfilled positions, rather, and maybe you can enlighten me in terms of, if we can utilize some of that money. It seems to be, and this is my first year, but what I've, I've heard other of my colleagues speak about is, we seem to have that extra money year over year. I'd really love to see the teachers, the staff get the eight percent. I think they work hard. I think they're underpaid. I think teachers have been underpaid for a long time, and we need to start chipping away at that, that gap. It's one of the gaps I want to approach and attack, and I really think we need to see where we can come up with the extra three percent to make it eight.
Thank you, Mr. Tros. Dr. Brennan?
So, I certainly agree with Mr. Tros's approach, and I think that the staff are so important, and we know we're having trouble retaining staff. But I also think the reality of the fact is, is that we have had to really scratch to get the funding from the city for the five percent. I don't think we're going to go back, I know we're not going back to the city to get more funds. Unfortunately, and I'm sure Dr. Edwards can help us, or perhaps finance can help us with, but I don't think that we have the millions of dollars that we're going to need to do eight percent raise. So I think we have to, based on what we know is in reality, do the five percent, and also recognize the fact that we, at last meeting, did, we did give bonuses to the staff, which I'm sure that they appreciate. We've done great, we, we tried to do very well with the health care benefits, so it's, it's inexpensive for them with good health care. And I also think that I don't want to ignore the other needs that we have for our students. You know, I think that these other things need to be addressed for the students to get a better education, which we also want. So, no question, the staff deserve it, should get it. Unfortunately, I think our hands are tied by City Council. I would like to, I'm going to, I would support the five percent, and then have an option to use some of these other items that I think will be important for the schools.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Ms. Morrison?
I agree that we need to find ways to pay our staff more, and I don't see how we can, I looked at seven million additional, seven million, and additional twelve million, and I don't see where we can get that in the budget. I agree with Dr., what Dr. Brennan said, but feel strongly that if the budget comes in with more money, that that goes strictly toward salaries and benefits, and finishing the priorities that we have. I'd like, I agree that we need to, there are priorities on this list that are critical to the success of our students, and, but I think to get contracts out, I would support the five percent, but hold steady that we're going to be able to come back and do more.
So noted. Madam Clerk, Dr. Carter?
I, at this time, just looking at the reality of the situation, five percent is the best starting point, I believe. And as Mrs. Morrison stated, I really want to see some of the items for the students also addressed. So, I'm with five percent.
I think this school division has the resolve to do what we need to do going forward, and I support the five percent at tonight. Dr. Senha?
This is just such a tough one, because I really support the eight percent. And what rationale has City Council given us for not supporting eight percent?
Declining enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
Other priorities?
Other priorities, Dr. Senha, competing dynamics, public safety, et cetera. And there really was a resolve to get us this amount that we requested.
Well, then, I would, I would be in line with Dr. Brennan and. that we go ahead and approve the five percent. And should there, why any miracle of funding be extra money coming from the state that it all be allocated towards salaries? So I would go with the, so I guess the one plus are higher priority than one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, with the zero and one plus and the budget plus the five percent.
And we're going to come back, Dr. Senha, for a brief discussion on the priorities after we can dispatch it this matter. Thank you, Dr.
And just one other question. So knowing how cumbersome this can be and not fully appreciating how that works with your payroll system. So if you loaded in the five percent and then you were able to bump it to eight percent, how much extra work is that for you? I mean, it's like duplicating the task essentially, right?
I'll let Ms. Davis explain it.
Okay, so with the five, the five percent is the difficult part because that's where we're changing, redoing our pay scales. So that's the process. The eight percent, we were just going to do the new pay scales plus an additional three percent, which is much less work than that initial five percent.
But either way, you have to put in the new pay scales.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no avoiding that. So the, well, so like, yeah, okay.
And I was remiss in reminding the board, but just in case you, the original budget proposal was for five percent this year and five percent next year, which is a ten and a quarter.
We all understand that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we'll be back.
Okay, yeah, that's a good reminder. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Senha. Dr. Gupta?
You know, if I'm playing a game of soccer, I see the goalposts switching around here quite frequently. Last board meeting, we had the money on the table to give everybody a bonus, a real bonus. And we chose for half of that money, stuff over staff. We did, as a board. And those same people are now advocating for eight percent who voted against that. So if I'm a soccer player, I see the goalposts moving and I'm confused. Where are we going? Where are we heading? Right now, we don't have money on the table, so we're changing the goalpost again to eight percent, confusing the public. Where are we going? Where are we heading? So are these realistic expectations we set up or these are unrealistic expectations we set up? Last time, we had the opportunity, and I'm not giving a grand standing speech, but if it is so be, the opportunity to really meet, where the rubber meets the road, give them a bonus. And if you really appreciated staff, you should have done it. The problem I have is the Amherst County approved six and a half percent in their last school board meeting. I don't know where they got the money, but I understand right now we don't have the money. So when we had the money, we escaped through the exit door, take the route, not approve the whole money for the bonus. Now we don't have money. We're telling people, guess what? You can get eight percent, nine percent, 10 percent. So I'm not going to vote for something which we don't have on the table. So we'll stay five percent.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta. Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, I support Mr. Tros on this. We've talked about this. Every one of us has said we support eight percent. We've talked about it over and over and over again. And our budget will allow it. Let's talk reality, folks. The monies that Dr. Gupta is referring to are monies that we had in a fund balance. We had over three and a half million dollars left over from last year for unfulfilled positions that we then had to spend before we lost in our budget this year. Why don't we look at those positions? They weren't filled last year. Every year that I've served on this board, we've been voting away a fund balance. I personally think city council told us, hey, put on your big boy pants and tighten your budget up. That's what you need to do. And that's why we only received what we received. I think we need to, we owe it to our staff to go back and look at our base budget. I've advocated for looking at our base budget all the time. Go back, look at our base budget. Positions that we have not funded year after year and end up with a fund balance at the end of the year, we need to be looking at those. That money could be reallocated to this eight percent. We just spent over $3 million from last year. Folks, when I'm looking at the human resources report, I see more retirements and more people leaving than I see us hiring. So therefore, we have even less positions that we're going to be filling this year. Therefore, prediction, we're going to probably have a bigger fund balance next year. Why not allocate that money now to our staff, fulfill the commitment that we've been talking about month after month after month through this budget process? I'm going to hold fast at this eight percent. I will not vote for any budget that does not have the full eight percent. I might not be on the winning side of that vote. The will of the board might be something different, but I'm going to stand behind what we've talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. And all of this is so fluid. And I do want to remind the board that each of us had an opportunity when we met jointly with council to express our thoughts and concerns about the budget process at that time. And so with all of the factors before us, my simple math shows that there are six board members that have articulated a regard for five percent and two for eight percent. I don't know if we need to formally carry a motion, Dr. Edwards.
No.
I think we can kind of see that we're leaning at the five percent.
We have to bring back the formal budget to you for a vote when we get the actual numbers.
All right. So five percent is where administration will move forward. At this time, it's been so noted that if we are able to do more, that certainly will be factored in depending on the outcomes from the state. Now, this is somewhat tedious and we're not
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Harvey.
So we're saying we're not even willing to go back and look at the budget.
No, what we are saying is that the administration is going to continue to do what they need to do as we wait for the state. And what we really need to do is do some advocacy. Mr. Harvey, and I'd be delighted to join you on that effort to try to get the state to do whatever we can get them to do, which will be in the best footing for us here at LCS. This contracts, all of that's got to be moving forward. And so that's what we're saying.
But we're looking at what everybody else can do in their house, but we're not going to look at what we can do within our own house.
I think we have. We've been looking at this and we will continue to look at it. All right?
We've not approved a budget.
That is correct.
Okay.
All right. Now, looking at these priorities. Obviously, with strained resources as we have them, I would like to start on this side with Mr. Harvey this time. If you could articulate maybe one item or whatever it is that you would think to be something that is a priority, we'll record them down because we would be here forever if we had a lengthy discussion. All I want to do is what would be a top priority for you, Mr. Harvey?
Eight percent salary.
Oh, no, we're not
No, eight percent salary. You asked me what my priority is.
I got you. I have no problem with that. Mr. Harvey, I have no problem with that. Eight percent, let that be so noted. Now, we're talking about these priorities. Now, Dr. Gupta?
You know, these are added fixed costs to our budget forever. And knowing we don't have money to pay the market salaries right now, I will not be supporting any positions adding on to the current budget. Now, having said that, my priorities, as I've said privately and publicly, to reinforce the bench. You know, so there's a succession plan, very clear cut going out, improving the communication with the community. That's very important. And reducing the achievement gap. Those are the priorities. Approving a position here and there, I need to see a linkage with the goal. What are we going to achieve with that? Because otherwise, what I see is a resource creep. You understand creep? Because we initially talked about one restorative justice position. I see two of them here. So there's two, this has two coordinators for $111,000. So initially was one, now it's two. So I may be reading it wrong, but I looked at it twice. On page two, it's $111,000, intervention specialist, restorative justice practices coordinator, two FTEs.
It says adjusted to one FTE on February first.
Oh, so I didn't, I didn't see the red one. So it's one FTE is $111,000?
We have to build in both salary and benefits and all of the funds that would be associated with them.
That's more than what we'd be paying an assistant superintendent or all these positions, right?
Now, if we had an assistant superintendent, we'd have to pay them salary and their benefits as well, which would probably be upwards over 150 or 60.
Because somebody was telling me the median income in City of Lynchburg just this morning was $26,000. But apart from that, to answer your chair, Mr. Chair, your question, at this point, I cannot support or articulate adding any positions, not knowing where do we stand on the salary front.
Thank you, Mr. Gupta. Dr. Senha?
Can I ask a question about one of these?
Please.
Positions?
Please.
The grant specialist is, is the need for that because of the management and reporting of all the CARES money?
We only have one grant specialist to manage CARES, to manage title grants, to manage ed foundation, community foundation. And it's always been a priority. We just haven't been able to do anything with it. But CARES has really Has really shown that we
Multiplied that burden. Okay.
Can I also say one more thing?
It's a lot of grant money.
We used to have
Let's stay together, everybody.
We used to have to with Ms. Campbell and so that that handled.
So we downsized?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Before COVID.
Did everybody understand what Ms. Davis just said? No, please say that again. I want every board member to always hear what we're saying.
So we used to have two grant coordinators, and we downsized one, which is why we're bringing this back up because now we've added CARES, which is a beast.
Yeah, I've done some assisted on reporting that pales in comparison to what the schools are dealing with. So I do see that almost as a zero priority. And then a question about the tuition for the CTE Academy. So that's to support students attending that? Okay. So if we didn't have that funding in there, what would the, so that would be an out-of-pocket cost for students?
We just wouldn't be able to offer that as an option for students to go to the CBC CTE Academy.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Senha, am I understanding you to say the grant specialist and possibly CTE Academy for you?
Yeah, you know, I really want to, I think, I think we all benefit and for many of our students would benefit from a broader, richer assortment of career tech opportunities. You know, our local economy counts on these people. And even though I work in higher ed, I think there's just too much emphasis on going to college. College is not for everybody. A lot of students enroll in college, go into debt, and then they never finish. And so I think the wise alternative to that and suitable for many of our students, and I'm not, I don't want to minimize their potential. I think they all, if they put their heads to it, are college-worthy. So I don't want to say that they're not college-worthy. But, you know, there's lots of opportunity out there in career tech. And so I see that as a priority, and that directly benefits our students. It doesn't feed the performance gap, but it helps us in our, by name and need beyond graduation. And having been affiliated with CBCC, I know what a wonderful resource it is locally. So if, so if I were doing this list, and of course, you know, I would have put that at a zero as well or a one plus. So and then the tuition for U of L DE education, that's the elective courses for some of our
Dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment. Okay. And they can only get that at U of L?
That's our Those are courses.
Okay.
And it's Latin one with medical terminology, Latin two with medical terminology, and then an introduction to, like Teachers for Tomorrow, it's an introduction, two introductory education courses for potential educators.
Okay. And those are really critical for our grow your own kind of
Yeah, those would be, that would be the grow your own. Yes, ma'am.
Offset the teacher shortage. Is there a lot of demand for that? Or do you really think there's 10?
I don't know the demand for that. This is the first year that we've offered to our students.
Brand new thing?
Yes.
Okay.
I could certainly find out the demand for the students that have asked to enroll for the fall.
Okay. So, okay, now I asked my question. So what question am I supposed to be answering? Sorry.
But what I am thinking you are saying is a huge priority for you is the grant specialist, which you said should be a zero, and then CTE Academy, which should be a one plus or a zero. Those are the two. Now, you were asking about the
I would like, I would like to see them moved up to zeros. And then these other things, I don't know that we can bump anything down from a zero to a one. So, no.
And we were just looking for a couple. So you've done, you've done an outstanding job, Dr. Senha.
Yeah, I really, with the CARES things, I just, one grant specialist is just not going to be able to do it, even if that person is Superman or whatever.
She is.
It's just
She is.
She is.
Yeah. And so, you know, and a lot of these, the federal government hasn't even figured out what they want to do. And none of their questions are tied to the way education does things. It's really So I really do recommend putting that at a zero, as much as we're reluctant to add staff. Because that, they're going to be filing those reports for the foreseeable future because a lot of those reports would do like a year or so after the funding's been spent. And we have spending up through 2025. Yeah.
All right.
So that's my recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Senha. We have it recorded. Dr. Carter?
Number 140, social worker. I think that's something that we really have to do and should be a zero priority. Also, for the 119, which is the
Oh, that's the grant specialist.
Grant specialist.
Yes. I've seen the person that we have, she's awesome, but we don't want to burn her out. And especially with everything else that the CARES funding is requiring. But my question is, can this person be funded through CARES? The new position, the grant specialist. Is that a possibility?
It won't last. Part of trying not to put too many positions in CARES is because the CARES money is going to go away. And just another reminder to the board that you do have a entire program in the virtual academy that is funded with CARES funding. So we tried to, and some other positions that when we originally got our budget cut last year, that we put into CARES, that we're going to have to slide back into, we slid some back into operating, but sliding into operating.
Do you think we can slide this person back into operating later on? Would you use CARES?
That would be the future board that would decide that.
But that, and 117, 113, and 112, I mean, these, like the U of L and the dual enrollment and the 112 is
CTE.
CTE. Yes, this gives students an opportunity to really, for different students, the CTEs and the U of L. So I really want to see those moved and prioritize. 145 fuel, we know that's an, just, we just need to do that one. And 150 is assessment of literacy person, which is the assessment for the test. I hear a lot of the, well, one librarian is very pleased with that. That that is one of the options on the table. Health insurance, 121. And the employee perks. If we can't give them eight percent, perks really help. If we can't give them eight percent, perks really help. And one thirty-seven with the students that are struggling to get the GEDs, is the GED program now, it's much harder to obtain a GED, and just two more. The reading specialist, one oh-eight.
Just add the whole list.
I'm just looking, we have to have the reading specialist. Who do we talk about?
We have it down, Dr. Carter. We are recording it.
And, I'm gonna be quick. Twelve and sixteen. Oh, student support counselors, we need those. And just last one, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty. They're all together.
Now, Dr. Carter, are, were you giving those to us in the order of priority, or they were just?
Order of priority, yes.
All right, so we have for you, one forty, one nineteen, one seventeen, one thirteen, one twelve, one forty-five, one fifty, one twenty-one, one thirty-seven, one oh-eight, twelve, sixteen, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, and forty all together.
All of them.
With the little kids.
I got you.
The little children, yeah, the pre-ages.
All right.
And the three-year-olds.
All right, thank you, Dr. Carter. What's it?
Well, I want them all. Just put it out there, along with the eight percent, that I, we can talk people into giving this. I assume we're not looking at zeros and one-pluses, those are kind of built in. But I'm, I do like the grant specialist. I think that's a priority, as we're looking at ways that we can get more money and how we're using it and managing grants, working with it very little as a special supervisor. It is, it takes a lot of work and effort, and we need to have someone there. My other priority, CTE Academy, I think we have a group of students that really would benefit from that kind of training. Other school divisions offer it, or will be offering it, and I think we need to. And I'm gonna go a, a little different. I think a pre-K three-year-old classroom is critical for us. We need to be adding more. If we get them in three-year-old, and we keep them in four-year-old, then we get them into kindergarten, then we're gonna have them in Lynchburg City Schools, and there is a tremendous need for a three-year-old program, and I would like that as a priority.
Got it, and that's twenty-seven, thirty-four, thirty-nine.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Morrison, Dr. Brennan.
Doctor, I would like them all, too. So you just want them all for me, just gotta hit the top button? But my top two are the pre-K for three and four. You know, I think in every, I think for a long time, we discussed about how important that is, and out of the community conversations, I think every conversation is centered around the fact that we really should have a pre-K program in every school to provide those services. We know there's data suggests that that's a successful way to help with the achievement gap. So that's my first priority. And then my second is the Interventional Specialist for Restorative Justice, which is one thirty-six. You know, we all know very personally that, that discipline has been a huge problem this year, and it's been a problem in the past also. And I think that this is a, a way for us to take a different approach to how we have approached discipline in the past, to try to do better by our students and have them do better than home. So my, my top two are the pre-three and the three-year-old and four-year-old pre-K, and the Interventional Specialist for Restorative Justice.
Thank you so much, Dr. Brennan. Mr. Trolls?
Okay, first, a comment about the grant specialist, and I understand, my understanding is we need the grant specialist because of the care, the extra work that the CARES money is talking about, but yet, when Dr. Carter talked about using CARES money to fund that position, there seemed to be a disconnect there. But, so I don't understand why we need an extra grant specialist to go after the CARES money, which is only gonna be here for three years. Why can't we use the grant specialist with three-year money? After three years, we don't need an, an extra grant specialist, so that's just my comment there. It just doesn't.
It's more than.
Well, go ahead, no.
It's more than CARES money. It's, Title I is a lot.
Okay, well, my understanding of the talk, of the discussion so far is, and I give a lot of value what Dr. Senha says, is that, that overhead associated with going after the CARES money necessitated a grant specialist. And I think Dr. Carter had a very valid point, that let's use CARES money to fund that grant specialist. Dr. Edwards says, well, you know, that CARES money's gonna go away, it's a temporary position, but I don't, I mean, so there's a disconnect for me there as to why we need a grant specialist long-term, if we are just dealing with a three-year, three-year program that we're chasing. So, and it's not, so I don't support the grant specialist, especially because I see other priorities. My order of priorities, then, is I agree the CTE program, I think it's fantastic, let's if these guys get out there and hit the road making some, you know, money. The U of L, for the same reason, and I agree, and I'm splitting the baby here, I agree that it's very important for the pre-K, would I like to have the pre-K three, pre-K four course, but in order to, you know, split the baby, I'll go with the pre-K four as my third priority. I do think they're very important in, in addressing some of the achievement gap issues.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Trolls. I believe that I support Dr. Gupta and his statements about reducing the achievement gap, and I know all of these things can do it, and some of the items have already been mentioned more than once, so I think that will stand for itself. So if you all don't mind, I would at least like to go on record to say that I would support the rest. And I know we will figure out a way to work it out if we can't do this, but one twenty with Partners in Education Liaison. All right, thank you so kindly. Now, I believe we have documented every person's thoughts on this, and we will have, Ms. Morrison said the key piece, we have not adopted a budget yet. Administration can take what has been said today and make some sense out of it with further conversation, and then come back to us at the appropriate time. So I want to thank you all for handling this in the manner in which you have. That will now move us to Section E. You see the following information or items. Thank you all for your diligent participation in community conversations from Dr. Senha right on around to everybody. You've done a great job. Our final conversation, at least, conversation at least, right now, is going to be this coming Monday at Providence Transformation Church International from six to seven-thirty PM at four hundred Oakley Avenue. Please keep in mind that our financing facilities committee meeting is scheduled for the twenty-fourth at three-thirty PM. We're going to come together June the seventh for our next official school board meeting, and our work session will be on June the twenty-first, both in this, both in this room, and Dr. Senha will be leading us through our Legislative Advocacy Community Relations Committee on June the fourteenth. Dr. Senha.
On our calendar, do we have our board evaluation retreat, whatever, with the SBA coming up?
Thank you. Dr. Senha, I am so thankful that you brought that up. I think the wisdom of all of us is we would just wait until the new board is properly configured.
Okay.
And then come together and determine when and where that would take place.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Brennan?
Since this is a work session, a little bit less formal than the board session, can I ask, as far as the community conversations go, I know that we have another one scheduled for, for next week. Can I just ask Dr. Edwards, where, what will be the culmination of that process that would have led us towards and hoping forward to come out of those conversations?
So, part of the process was, and for those people who have attended, they know that we have the three questions. Number one is to share data. So even though we've had Blair Smith here, and also at City Council presenting data, we did not want to assume that everyone is tuning in, watching us, or tuning into City Council, and we wanted people to engage with the demographic data, the facilities data, the projected enrollment, city projections, and all of that, which is what we've been sharing with community for the last four meetings that we have. And then just getting their comments and feedback about the data. There are some interesting things that they did not know about our schools in terms of just kitchens in schools, and cafegematoriums in schools, and, and just the different things, and which schools are landlocked and don't have a footprint that we could build on, and, and just what code is and how old our buildings are. So that, that's the first and foremost, just to get the information out there so that people are informed about what exists. The next part is, well, what's next? What are we looking at? And the biggest thing is, we are looking at our primarily elementary facilities with the goal of possibly building a new school, which would be about a seven hundred, seven-fifty school, which leads to considerations for consolidation, school closures, and rezoning as possibilities. So we wanted to make sure that our community was well-informed, that that is what we are looking at, and get their feedback on that, as well as we look at, you know, reasons and rationale behind that. Also, looking at our capital improvement plan, we do have a ten-year capital improvement plan, which we submit to the city, because the city owns the building, so any kind of renovation that is planned going forward, we have to work with the city for that. And even if we did not do any new construction and can commit it to using our existing buildings, there's still a topic of conversation that says they are in need of maintenance renovation, and in some instances, updating to code in terms of what's appropriate, and just looking at accessibility being one of those things. So that's another thing that we wanted to make sure that community was informed and could engage us in. The other part was to get their questions. We asked a lot. The Dominion Seven also asked a lot, the Demographer asked a lot, but that doesn't mean that we asked them all, and it's nothing like talking to a parent, or a teacher, or a student for that matter, to get a different perspective about, well, have you thought about, have you considered, and what about this? So we wanted to get that information from our community, and we've had a mix of staff members and teachers and community members and city officials and parents, and even some students, not as many as, as we could have, but some, to be out to share that information. So we do have one more, and we're gonna compile all that. Our next steps is to form a smaller working group that takes that along with the information. We have a consultant in Dominion Seven that is helping us with the building parts of it. There's a cost associated to possible options. The cost of building a new elementary school is somewhere in a neighborhood of thirty-eight to forty-one million dollars. The cost of adding on to a school, depending upon what it is, there's a cost there, renovations are somewhere between eight and possibly eighteen or twenty million dollars, depending on a school. So we need to look at that and make sure that, again, our long-range plan, if it's renovation, renovation, there's a time factor as to when and what do those dollars look like, and can the city move forward with that, and what do we do for educational programming? The other side of that is the educational programming, and we're, this smaller internal work group will have to put together an RFP, request for proposals, for a national educational consultant to work with us as we look at the programming aspect, because the programming is gonna be a big key to dictating the facilities. And just to give you one example, if this is a community that says, we understand we have, you know, a larger elementary school, but we may want to keep a couple of schools to be what we call primary schools, pre-K, K, and one, well, that's a programming decision that affects a facilities discussion, and even to the makeup of what's in a pre-K, K, and one classroom with plumbing, and things like that are very different. Rail heights are different for students who are very, very tiny and going up and downstairs and things like that. So those are considerations of what we do. Schools of innovation is another thing that we need to look at. We currently have three, two at the elementary level, one at the middle school level. CTE, we talked a little bit about that. We are leasing space for Empowerment Academy Virtual School and for some of our special education staff as well. So those all factor into it. So we'll have a national education consultant work with us in this community to sort of move us forward with the future of what do we see as being our offerings here at Lynchburg City School, and how do we want to organize ourself around that. While we consider some big things, three big ones are, obviously, programming will dictate it, the feasibility, usability of existing space and any new spaces we build, and cost, can't not include cost with that, to get the best cost-benefit analysis programming that we would present going forward. We need community input to do that, and that's what we've been doing before school ends. It was really important to get input before families move away. There's, we're still gonna be working during the summer, but the timeline is gonna come upon us very quickly in that this school board will have to make some decisions once you get some options in front of you that says, the Lynchburg City School Board likes option A, and that's what we want to submit to City Council for council's approval, support, and funding. For you to do that, you would need community input, you would need the consultant input, both Dominion Seven and the national consultant, as well as the cost-benefit analysis, some attorney's things in terms of looking at the desegregation order from nineteen seventy-one, and making sure any kind of demographic change or assignments of pupils rezoning, we still have equitable access for all of our students in our meeting. That, there is a lot of work to do upfront and behind the scenes with timing. The small group will give a timeline in working with the consultants on when decisions have to be made, and they have to be timed with funding, because obviously, City Council would want to know what is the investment in what they have to do moving forward. So to to the degree that people are listening, if you have not come out to one of these, please come to, I'm the one on Monday night at Providence Transformational Church. We will also have all of this information on our website. Our team has been busy working in the field and also getting ready for the end of the school year. There is a, if you go to our website and you have not been able to attend, there is a place where a person can submit comments and information or feedback or questions on our website if they have not been able to attend. And you can attend virtually, and I, you know, just a shout-out to the people who were on Zoom last night in chat, they asked a lot of great questions. So we're also capturing their work virtually as well.
Dr. Brennan?
Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for that explanation, and I also want to say at first that I think that the, the, the format for the community conversations has been so well-done, and I think it's been great that, that Director Reeves and her team has been able to adapt the format as it's gone on to make it better and better, and I hope that that format will continue in the future for other topics that we have to, since it's been so good. But I have to say, I think that people are coming to this with questions that they would like to have answered, and although it was great to have facilitators at the tables, they understandably could not answer specific questions that people were asking, and neither could I as a board member, as far as being knowledgeable, and I think, I, I thought that part of the process was they would submit questions that would be answered either under frequently asked questions on the website or in some other format, but I think to have some follow-up to those people to say, here are some answers. And along with that, you had mentioned, I think, in a recent communication from City Council, saying that they perhaps would like to have the demographer come and give the information about the, the enrollment and demographics. You know, watching Mr. Smith's presentation to City Council about the demographics, it was pretty weak, as far as not being able to say what the number of students in our city is that, that, you know, are available, the total population for schools, and then how many go to public schools and how many are not, based on the census, which is not gonna be open till next year, was a very, you know, not very reassuring that we really had the information that we need to make decisions about where we should go. So I would just hope that there is gonna be a, a continuation of the process with answers to the questions that have been raised.
And I think one of the things that we have been saying is compiling it all, we broke it into five smaller community conversations so that we could actually have time to talk, instead of one big one and then put everything together. And I know what we're doing right now is compiling everything into sort of thematic questions, and I just looked at a couple of those questions and comments. A lot of the comments were just, thank you for providing the information. And remember, when I started the presentation, much of my goal was to provide information, really, to get what was shared with us from Dominion Seven, and even to a degree from the previous demographer, our capital improvement plan, the conditions of our buildings, to put that information in the hands of our citizens and our residents, so that when we do get to the meat of decision-making, at least, we don't have to go back and give them background information. They have the background information. But it's also to generate the questions that we need to move forward, and, and many of those questions will be directed towards either on the facility side of it or on the educational programming side of it, which is where our national consultant will come in to assist us with that. So for our folks who are out there, please be patient with us. We are, I wish this was our only job, that we, we enjoy doing community conversations, but just getting back to also the business of getting kids ready to graduate and everything takes up some of the time during the daytime that we just haven't had everything flushed out as well. I think what our most important priority was for my staff is presence and engagement, and I hope this community, and I hope this board, has seen the number of just different administrators, not just elementary administrators, but even our secondary folks are there, and. and the time that they spent in terms of just being present and capturing and engaging in the conversation. That was our first start of what we wanted to have happen. This is going to be a long process. And I think once we get everybody's thoughts together from these first five and then we can categorize it as you asked and here you are and you asked and this is what we need to go out and still get an answer to, we'll have more conversations and more discussion. I think some of the danger is answering the questions because some folks are like, well, which schools are you closing? Well, that's a very good question, but I can't answer that right now, even if we are closing schools. But it's one that I want to note that that is a concern of folks. They want to know what schools are we closing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brennan. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Ms. Morrison?
And I just, along the same line, Dr. Brennan, I think we've had great sessions. It's gotten better each time and there's been a lot of conversation. But I think we've asked questions and I was just wondering a similar thing about a Q and A. Are we going to have a session where here are the questions that came in here and we can't give you these answers, but these were the questions? I just think that kind of follow-up is, it keeps the conversation going.
Yes, yes. And I do think that is, that, I don't think, I know that that is our intent and we were trying to get through these five Mondays. So that we would have a nice, rich, here's what everybody said. And I will tell you the dangers of what we didn't want to have happen. Because remember, our meetings were regionalized. So we didn't want to put out, well, here are the questions that are asked and they look regionalized versus someone who will say, well, you know, what's, I don't want to come. So we really wanted to get everybody's voice and then put it together and said, this is what everyone said mixed up regardless of whether your school zone is, you know, Bass or whether your school zone is Pla Muro.
All right, I think those comments are so noted. Dr. Senha?
Yeah, I agree. The presentation on the demographics was kind of weak and clearly he didn't understand all that went into that. He's not a demographer, so I do think it may be worthwhile to invite the demographer in to talk about it. And then I was just kind of disappointed because there are population estimates out there. I've looked them up and if that, if they are, if those estimates are consistent with what the 2020 census shows, then what we're going to see is that between 2010 and 2020, population, the under 18 population in Lynchburg declined. And the over 18 explains all the population increase in the city, half of which is just in the 18 to 24-year-old group, college age. They may enroll and not stay here, but then they're replaced by others. So it's a revolving door of, but that's where a lot of the population growth is. And then overall, in 2010, if these numbers hold true, given the school age population and our enrollment numbers, we were in, we were, 78% of school age children were enrolled in LCS in 2010. It's about 72% now. And I also want to push back on the notion that it has to do with dissatisfaction or failing schools. People choose private schools for a lot of different reasons. A primary one is religious education, which the city schools will never do. We can't. We are a public school. So there's that. There's the perceived advantage of, you know, if I go to, if I send my kid to a private school, they're more likely to get into college. Not necessarily true, but there's that. It has very little to do with failing schools, so to speak. So, you know, I really, and then there are people who send their kids to private schools because the private schools are not held to the SOLs. They don't have to take them. So they don't have to worry that teachers might be teaching to a test rather than doing more innovative stuff in education. Well, we're stuck with the structure of the SOLs and that darn test. And so it is what it is. So, you know, I really want to push back on that consumer choice notion because I think it just oversimplifies what the issues are. But the reality is that the school age population has declined over the last decade. And that, you know, that was kind of shown in that demographic report. But it would, and I also note that there was some skepticism among people at the tables I sat at for the two community conversations I did over declining fertility. And we happened to have somebody who was affiliated with Centra at one of our tables. And I didn't push the matter, but you know, Centra serves not just the city of Lynchburg, but as far away as Farmville and some other areas. So a lot of what they're perceiving as increased fertility may be for families who are outside of the city. So there's a lot of that going on.
All right. Madam Clerk, please so note that this is obviously a topic of interest of this board and we want to facilitate that, if not on the agenda for tonight. But I do thank you all for everything that has been said because it's so important. The chair will hear Dr. Carter and then if you all don't mind, we're going to move to Section F.
Well, I'm so proud to say that someone asked last night, well, what's the use of being here? The decisions have already been made, what schools we're going to close. And I said, and I'm, that's, and I'm so proud to say we haven't made that decision. I told them this, we're just not meeting just to be meeting, but it's to really gain input and to share the information.
Thank you, Dr. Carter. I'm very proud of what we're doing and thank each of you for your input. And now move to Section F. Pursuant of the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A1. The school board needs to convene a brief closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. The superintendent's evaluation is there, a motion to go into closed meeting.
A move that we go into closed meeting?
Move by Dr. Carter. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Brennan. And if further questions or discussion on the motion hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Scoop up, remember Trolls?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Brennan?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Senha?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Scoop up, remember Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this work session is adjourned. I thank the public for all that you're doing.